We are right at seven o'clock, so call tonight's city council meeting to order. And Jolene, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Valento is absent this evening. Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
Mayor Bain.
Here. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of council, we have an agenda before you this evening. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? And our agenda is approved. Our next item this evening is open forum. Open forum is any interested parties' opportunity to address council on any topic of your choosing. If you're interested in open forum this evening, there is a sign up sheet. There was a sign up sheet. I'll also pause for names if there's anyone else that would like to speak. No, that's all right. All right. First, we're open forum this evening, Eugene Hurstel. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Eugene Hurstel, 10234, 204th Street North, Forest Lake. And I'm here to talk about the pickleball courts. We really appreciate that they got resurfaced in that and got new paint and whatever. But we're kind of wondering, the pickleball association and the members are wondering what, just what kind of job it is or was done. And there seems to be some issues. And especially with the rain, that's part of it, most of it. But it started bubbling up and then would peel off because it could never adhere to the cement. But, so, we thought this would be great if they could get out, the contractor would eventually get out and do it. And it did take a while because it just kept raining and raining. And we finally got some dry days. And he came, or his crew came out and they started shaving or peeling off the areas that had puddled up. And they put an epoxy on there. And then they, it was smoothed out and they did also, well, I should say, sand it and stuff after it hardened. It was a hard epoxy. And at one time, they came out and fixed a few of them, but now they came out for a whole day and they were going to close the courts and stuff. And so we were going to be off the courts, which, to make sure that it would dry and prepare, get prepared correctly. Well, they did finally get it shaved and then they put some on. It's still a little dip and it's still rough and maybe a little bit of indentation in that. But they took and they painted with a brush. And I happened to be there because we had some issues with a box. And it was 8:30, quarter to nine, and they came at that time. They had shaved it off and done different things to it. And they came and it was almost dark. So, and the guy, what he did was he took a brush. And instead, it's, it's really supposed to be seal coated. That's what the rubber, it's probably, I don't know how thick it is, but the whole court, all the court should be like a, if you took your driveway and you started putting the tar down or, you know, and it seals it and there's no pores and whatever. Well, we're finding out that there's all kinds of little pores in it, little tiny holes. And then there's hairline cracks going through. And I did talk to one of the guys that was there and he was real rude, which, whatever. He said, "You go to the city and you talk to the city." And I said, "I just have some questions. If you could, because you're the contractor, you're the workers, what is it? Can you tell me if these little hairline cracks that are going everywhere that we thought were supposed to be fixed and maybe not happening again, at least for a little while, that there, are they, how deep are they?" And he just, "Go talk to the city." But then there was another guy there and he was a little bit better. So, anyway, I don't know those answers, but I think we've got to have to find out. We appreciate he spent $18,000 on those courts. And I hope that we wouldn't have to go back in three years and then resurface again. That, that's, to me, that's not acceptable. I think they should have rolled those areas instead of painting a brush. And I don't even know if the guy mixed the paint that well because it looks really, it's off color. It's supposed to be the same color, or at least close, but I know it does fade in the sun and stuff and absorb that, those rays. But anyway, and that's kind of what we're, we, we just want the best for the city. We want the best. We accept or want a job that's well done. And that's, that's what I have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next on open forum, Don Ship.
My name is Donald E. Ship, Wyoming, Minnesota. My wife and I own and operate a hangar at the Forest Lake Airport. The Forest Lake, the city of Forest Lake has violated every hangar owner's contract at the airport by sending us bills for the runway paving project, which occurred in 2016. The runway was paved. The city sent us bills for the paving project and claimed that the charges were rent. It was not rent. The charges were a contract violation. Ground lease contract. We pay rent per square foot for the land that is leased. Page three, paragraph one. Threats toward me. I didn't pay the extra charges and the city threatened to declare my contract to be in default. They threatened to kick me off the airport for something that I didn't owe. I requested a meeting with Aaron Parrish, who was the city administrator at the time. Aaron Parrish told me the following, I'm quoting, "I know that there is no language in your contract to charge you for a runway paving project." The city council wanted it. The airport commission passed it. I had a council meeting in about 90 minutes. The best thing I could come up with was to call it rent." He later denied making those comments in front of the entire city council. Official notice. The city of Forest Lake has been notified many times about the contract violation, but fails to make full restitution for the overcharges. 2020. Sam Husnick informs me that he was going to have a meeting with Patrick Casey, Mayor Mara Bain, and Dan Undum in an attempt to resolve the issue. What stemmed from that meeting was the following. The annual charges would cease, but those that haven't yet paid still owe. That was not right. Sam has absolutely no authority to negotiate any terms that are outside of pre-existing contracts. I continue to advise the airport commission and the city council. Payment by Sam Husnick. In 2020, I was informed that most of my outstanding bill had been paid after making two data requests with the city of Forest Lake. I learned that Sam Husnick Construction had paid for most, but not all of my bill. I have tried repeatedly to reconcile my differences with Sam Husnick privately, but he continues to misrepresent proper public policy. Recommendations. Audit the payment records of every hangar owner. Repay those hangar owners who were overcharged. There is over $200,000 in the airport fund because the airport generates positive cash flow and MinDOT Aeronautics keeps giving the city vast sums of money to operate the airport. By the way, MinDOT receives absolutely no taxpayer money. All of MinDOT's money comes from aircraft operations. Pilots pay on every side. I will send you all of my source documents. I will also send them to the Forest Lake Times. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in open forum this evening? Jolene, is there anybody online for open forum?
The one attendee online isn't indicating a desire to speak at this time.
Okay. We will close open forum and bring agenda back to council. Council for your consideration tonight is consent agenda items 6A through 6G. Is there a motion or any changes?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to move 6B off the consent agenda and approve items 6A and C through G.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And consent agenda is approved. Move to the regular agenda.
Madam Mayor, we pulled 6B, right?
Yes, we did.
So, I'll make a motion and we approve the minutes from the August 26th, council here.
There's a motion. Is there a second for item 6B, the minutes from August 26th?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Say.
One abstention. Motion carries. Okay, move into our regular agenda. We have items 7A, consideration of Resolution 992401, state appropriations for city of Forest Lake Next Gen Headwaters Stormwater Flood Control and Park Planning Project. And Christina?
Hi, Mayor. Counsel, it's nice to see your faces. I do miss that from down here. So, we're here tonight, as you all know, in 2023, the city was successful in getting bonding dollars from the state in order to do the, what was referred to as the Next Gen Headwaters Stormwater Flood Control and Park Planning Project. The requested funding came after the judicial ditch four study was done and approved by both the city and the Rice Creek Watershed back in 2021. As Forest Lake continues to transition to this emerging suburban edge community, there's this greater focus on doing some regional stormwater bonding in the southwest corner of the city. And so, in order to move forward, sorry. In order to move forward with getting the grant funding, the city needs to pass a resolution and provide some more materials to the state. They'll take the information that's approved tonight and then put together the grant agreement that they'll send back to us. We have started working on the project with our consultants at Bolton &amp; Mink and Karnowski Consultants. The direction from the state that, was that we were able to expend funds from the date that it was approved by the state. So, included in your packet is the resolution. The DNR warned me they're very picky that if we were to change anything, maybe other than the name or the dollar amount, which you wouldn't change, that we should have it, have it run by them. So, if you do have any questions, we can talk through that. But that was a caution that I got from, from the DNR on this. Other items that they needed included the general project plan. So, that was something that had, language that had been used to describe the project during the bonding. I just kind of updated it. Legal description, or what we actually included was the maps of the three areas that we're hoping to acquire. The budget and a schedule. So, we're required to get the grants, funds encumbered, or the grant before the end of 2027. We have more time to expend it, but the hope is that we could have this project done in the next three years. So, that's what we've, we've included in your packet. At this point, there's no matching funds required for this project. If something were to happen, we would go over budget. We would obviously come back to council and have a conversation about that. We're expecting to have willing land sellers at this point. There is no talk of eminent domain. Again, obviously, if, if we butt up against that, that'll be a city council decision. With that, I think I will just stand for any questions that council has. Otherwise, we're looking for approval of Resolution 992401.
Thank you, Christina. Council, questions you may have, either on resolution or project overall?
The only question I have is when I was looking at those maps, trying to kind of piece together where that land is at, is there, is that a continuous stretch or?
Nope. It's kind of phased, so starting just below like Headwaters Parkway area and then going south.
Christina, you mentioned land acquisition. How, so, just from a timing perspective of where in the project plan, how does, where in the project does that timing come into place around, you know, targets for land acquisition, strategies for that? You mentioned a couple of different options and those would certainly be council decisions. When do you expect us to be at that point in the project of having had some conversations and needing to make those decisions by, from a council perspective?
For a, from a council perspective, it'd probably be quite some time because, again, I think we're going to try and work with our, we know we, we've had one landowner that has reached out to us and is interested, maybe another who's not, and, you know, that, that we'll, we'll see how that goes. But our, our team met just before I went on vacation and I talked with Carl last week and he plans to put together another meeting. He's been meeting with the Bolton &amp; Mink folks, so we will probably be doing a lot of this stuff behind the scenes until we either get an agreement, in which case you'd have to, you know, approve the purchase of the property or if we run into some roadblocks and we need to strategize. But our intention right now is to work with willing land sellers.
And how soon does that start? Like, does that, the considerations of those parcels and those conversations? That's what I'm trying to get at, is that happen fairly early in the project and so there's?
To me, there's not much else to do. So, again, I don't, you know, we've, we've hired Carl Karnowski to kind of project manage this for us. So, I don't know those level of details and I think that's what we'll be meeting about at our next team meeting. But, you know, there's, there's no construction in this project, so it's land acquisition and then it's just design. So, once we know what land we're able to acquire, then it's a relatively easy handoff to Bolton &amp; Mink to do the design.
I think it's one of those topics that council will benefit from updates early and kind of understanding, like, is this a easy path? Are there some more challenging components of the project? And so, I would appreciate having that kind of mapped out early as part of, early part of the project plan.
Yeah, I mean, conversations will start this fall, I would anticipate, so we'll keep you updated on how those go.
So, trying to read this, maybe it was in the packet, but is most of this land already delineated wetlands? Or is this high, dry land? We put a moratorium on doing this ourselves for other property owners to be able to sell for wet banking, wetland banking. And so, is most of this wet?
I can't answer. I mean, it's along judicial ditch four for the most part, so whatever had kind of been, been in that area. I don't know if Ryan has any information or other folks.
Maybe non-developable or something.
There's, there is probably some of this area that's developed. This is the low area and the drainage area of that particular part of the land and that's why it's broken into the parcels it is because then you would be able to achieve the volume and that you would need to get to that area to provide for regional stormwater treatments if it were to provide for developments or other site improvements in that area. So, that's why it's broken and following the alignment that it currently is because that's where the, the volumes eventually would go and that'd make the most sense to, in areas to build future stormwater facilities because you'd be moving the less amount of dirt. Typically, you're going to build high drainage, it's going to flow downhill, right? So.
And then, but this is before my time, I assume, but it must have been a study that, that determined what per acre the fee is to become up to that 5.7 million or how did that dollar amount come about?
Previous staff came up with that number. It's the best that we can find out. So, and, you know, this was back in 2021, so we've had a few years pass. I think we'll have to approach this with, you know, what we think the fair market value is today. Yeah.
Just a point of context on, you know, regional, so the alternative to this is individual property stormwater management, right? And so, I appreciate your point on, is this some of this developable land? That may be, but also some of this would be developable land that in absence of this project would still have to have some level of stormwater management. So, it's going somewhere, I think the strategy is let's have a common place rather than each parcel, as it develops, having to do it. At a point when we're much earlier in development, we've certainly acknowledged, we've, you know, challenges on North Shore of doing this after the fact. And so, that's part of the reason why let's do this before those parcels develop.
Yeah, I mean, this is intended to really be helpful to development because this will take that burden off on an individual project basis to deal with their stormwater runoff. They'll be able to use most of it in these regional ponds.
Any other questions?
I can make a motion.
Ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 992401 for state appropriations for Forest Lake Next Gen Headwaters Stormwater Flood Control and Park Planning.
So, motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion. I'll take a second from councilmember Roberts. Any further discussion on this topic? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And motion carries. Our next item this evening, consideration of the crop restriction line map update for the Forest Lake Airport. And Christina, this is you as well.
Yep, and our computer just decided to restart, so if you need to reference the maps, they should be in your packet. This is an item that the airport commission reviewed last month. Back in 2018, Silas had put together a map, which was referred to as the crop restriction line when a former council member had asked him what the requirements were for maintenance out at the airport. MinDOT does have some guidance, those agriculture operation guidelines for Minnesota airports that's published by MinDOT and a copy of that's included in your packet. Using those guidelines, he drew the map from 2018 that you see in there. Now that we've done some more work out at the airport, added a taxi lane and, and apron expansion, we redrew those lines to encompass those new areas. Our Public Works folks have been using this map also, you know, to help folks understand where they intend to do the mowing out there. So, there is a little bit of difference between a crop restriction line map and a mowing map. The airport commission felt like we could apply some common sense that if there's a stormwater pond within the lines that show that it's going to be mowed, we're obviously not going to mow a stormwater pond. It has to function in order to treat runoff and whatnot. So, we didn't get that deep level of detail, didn't feel it was necessary. But the airport commission is recommending that the council approve the updated July 2024 crop restriction line map.
Thank you, Christina. Counsel, open it up for discussion or questions?
I have a question. I brought this to staff's attention and questioning whether or not the former Doherty DePonte home was still airport property, in which it turns out it is. And then I was told, learned later that at some point, the airport commission and council at the time decided not to maintain that. I don't know if any of you have driven by there. It looks like an abandoned house. I don't know if this is related to this and how much the mowing and if it's a separate issue. But we're starting to hold our residents to a higher level on code enforcement and mowing the lawn and the rest of that. And it's just, it's not a good optic to ourselves not be doing the same thing. And so, if this is something that needs to be added to this because it was, I guess, removed at one point by the airport commission, again, maybe two separate issues. I don't know.
Yeah, I'll have to defer to Director Adams for sure, but I don't think it was ever in this map. My understanding of the history is that the city council decided to use staff resources to mow along trails more. And, and given the resource that we have and the amount of, of mowing, they gave up mowing this, the DePonte home. Correct me if I'm remembering that wrong, Dave.
Yeah, we used to mow out there probably two or three full days just to mow everything out there. We would mow from Forest Road all the way to Highway 97. Every blade of grass out there got mowed. So, with the airport commission and, and staff, they figured it was probably a little bit better served for us not to be out there for three days when some parks weren't getting mowed every 10 to 14 days. So, it adjusted that way. We got down to about a point where we can be in and out there in a day with two guys mowing.
Is there a portion of that parcel that, if you think about our code enforcement guidelines, it's kind of like what's, what's, what's visible from the street and what's visible from the public? Is there somewhere between what's visible from the public and, Dave, what you described that was like a, maybe a broader footprint that might make sense that isn't the entire thing or is it all of it?
Quite honestly, the grass doesn't look bad. It's the house that looks bad. You should take the house down, not mow the grass. Because it's all, everything else is long grass around it. It's the house that's, looks bad. There's that house and there's another side house that were originally going to be taken down when the runway was paved. And I think it was too much money. There was tons of asbestos in there and it drove the price up to demolish that. Sam, you may, or councilmember Husnick, you may.
There's a bunch of buildings that MinDOT helped us take down because they were in the RPC. That building was not, so they wouldn't, they wouldn't help us pay for it.
And there is no long-term plan for taking that building down or?
Right.
And I think, to councilmember Husnick's point, that's why they didn't pay, or it would have been a city, a full city cost to take that, that building down and that side building. But I mean, really, it's, it's not the mowing. The rest, every, all the other grass around it, all the way from there to 97 is the same height of grass. It's just the.
I would think the farmer would want to cut some of that too, maybe make hay out of it.
They have in the past. I don't know, there's the old belt or the Fenway lights are laying in a pile out there and it's just, there's a lot of junk out there.
And it needs to get a whole lot of there. That was never meant to be there.
So, maybe this is the next agenda item, councilmember Roberts, of budgeting for this?
We're trying to be better at code enforcement and clean up our, have our residents and businesses clean up and we've got junk on our own property. That, that's a problem, my opinion. That's a problem. And I don't think asking to mow it once or twice a year, I'm not saying to make it look like a golf course or anything, but just in some brush, tall brush that's around that building, it, it doesn't seem like it would take a whole lot to at least make an effort. We're not even making an effort at this point.
We don't need a deferred maintenance list or a project list that's longer, but that, long-term, that, you know, home at some point starts to become a big liability. So, having that on radar and some sort of a plan, long-term, something also needs to be on the list.
Agreed. But I don't think it relates to this map stuff before you tonight, but I would, you know, again, maybe the budget stuff next or depending upon when you would want to slate it into the CIP to have it be removed.
I would agree. It doesn't necessarily have to be tied with, tied with tonight's agenda item. Anyone, any other comments or anyone ready for a motion on this item? I would move that we, council approve the crop restriction line map update for the Forest Lake Airport as presented by interim administrator Hand. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any follow-up discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
One no. And motion carries. That ends our regular agenda this evening. We are going to move into a couple of workshop topics. Just a quick note for those in attendance or watching that, for this item, this, we're going to move into a workshop area or workshop section, which is more informal. Anything that we talk about this evening that requires official action will come back in a regular meeting. I will note both of our discussion items this evening are related to our budget and would point to the preliminary levy vote that we will make here at our next regular agenda meeting to set the preliminary levy as required by law. Anything related to the budget will then also be considered for a final levy vote in December. And with that, we'll turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Got a couple of items on our discussion topic tonight relating to the budget. We're going to break it into two parts. One, follow up on the general fund budget from our workshop on August 19th. We'll pause after kind of that discussion, answer any questions you have there and then move on to our utilities budget from there. So, at our August 19th budget workshop, there are four specific items that city council asks for follow up on. One being more description on the 250,000 contingency budget line item, an updated 2024 projected general fund, fund balance, a list of budget line items the city, the city can't control the increase or decrease in costs. And then also some more details on the 2025 proposed park improvement projects. So, with that, we're starting with the contingency line item budget. The purpose of this budget line item is to maintain fund balance in the general fund at 50%. And this is per city policy. The purpose of that policy to maintain the 50% is that the city does not receive their first half property tax settlement until late June or early July. So, as the city has been approving budgets and their balanced budget is projected, that the city's fund balance will not increase based on revenues and expenditures balancing each other out. However, as expenses increase year after year and we're projecting that fund balance will not increase, that percentage of fund balance as it relates to those expenditures decreases. Therefore, we need to make sure that we have enough, are maintaining our fund balance. So, the next couple of slides will go into a couple of examples that hopefully bring to clarity what that line item's purpose really is. So, on this slide and also including your. So on this slide and also including your, in your packet, the 2025 preliminary budget includes a 250,000 of that contingency line item as well as 500,000 for 2026 and 2027. This is consistent, which was, which was presented to the City Council in the Financial Management Plan by Alers back in July. Also factor into 2024 ending fund balance, we are projecting that fund balance will increase in 2024 by about 426,000. So that is factored into this projection. So as you can see, the bottom line, where the percentage of the following year's budget, the percentage is right at 50%. 2025 is a little bit under, but you can see that we are projected to be maintaining really right at that 50% fund balance. This next slide shows what happens if that contingency line item of 250,000 is removed from 2025. All factors the same as what, as the first slide. That is the only change in this slide. In 2025, you can see from 2024 to 2025, the projected fund balance is not projected to increase. It stays at the 6.6 million. So you can see then we dipped down to 47.8% and then slowly increased back up to almost 49 and then 49% in 2027. So not quite meaning that 50% fund balance policy that the city has. As the city did just go through a rating call with issuing the equipment certificates, it is important to note that it is our policy to maintain that at 50%. And this is just that illustrative purpose of why that contingency line item budget is in there, that there is a purpose for it, that it's not just some fund set aside for any special project. So then where do we come up with that 426,000 estimate of where fund balance is going to increase? So taking a look at where we are at for 2024 and revenues compared to where we estimate to be, we're estimating that revenues will be over budget by about $85,000. The two things to point out on, on this slide is the property taxes. You can see that is about 100,000 less than what was budgeted. That is because the city historically receives almost 99% of what is levied. So that is reflected in that line item. The main difference making up that increase is in building permits. As it's due to conservative budgeting, we're not necessarily sure what's always going to come in in a given year, but that is trending that that will come in over budget, therefore making up most of the reason for being over budget. On the flip side, we take a look at expenditures, where we're at current year today and where we think we're going to end up a year, at the end of the year. We are projecting that we're going to be about 340,000 under budget. A large reason for this is due to wages and benefits. There were some positions in the 2024 budget that have not been filled. Specifically, the assistant city administrator position was in the 2024 budget as well as an HR manager is in the 2024 budget, has not been filled. And also the city has experienced quite a few vacancies at some point in 2024, therefore creating most of that reason for coming in under budget. The next part about is some costs that the city doesn't have real control over when it comes to budgeting. Some examples include insurance costs, computer support, electric utilities, fuel, repairs and maintenance. Some of these things the city really cannot control. Meaning, what's the price of fuel going to do? What's the price of electric utilities going to happen? Where are those going to end up? Based on where we are, where we are at in 2024 and where we're at in 2025, there is not much significant variance in these costs from where they were in 2024. So there wasn't really anything specifically to call out here. There are some small inflationary increases, but nothing significant that is playing into that general fund property tax increase. Next, we'll move on to park improvements. The first project is Maynard Park. It's scheduled for some improvements. And as you can see here, there's a lot of different things going on here, including removing the playground and replacing swing sets and slides and things of that nature, making the playground ADA accessible, removing some of the borders and resurfacing the park. This next slide, this shows as well as in your packet, this is pictures of the current state of the park. If you zoom in a little bit, they're a little bit larger in your packet. You can see that the equipment is pretty outdated and pretty worn down and due for replacement. The next item is Coolin Camp Park. Most of it, this is related to the fields and doing some improvements around the ball fields out there. It is redoing some of the dugout areas on the fields, adding a new storage shed, you know, grading and doing some filling spots to get the fields into better playing conditions and also is adding some pathways from the fields to the parking lot. This slide, this is the current pictures of the current state of the park and how the dugouts look and how there's no fencing around the field, et cetera, for right there behind home plate and the dugouts. This, this shows us something like what it might look like, a fenced and dugout area, covered dugouts as well as some longer fencing down the foul lines of the baseball field. The last one is some improvements out, out at Castlewood Golf Course. One thing is expanding the green on hole five. This increases the playability and maintenance of that green. Also, there are some drain tiles. There's some drainage areas out at the golf course at some different locations that need to be installed to help with that drainage. And then also some T-bok expansions on, on a hole and creating a women's team. So with that, that's the information that I had prepared for you tonight. There's some more details in your packet. They'd be happy to answer if you have any questions on that or what we just went, just went over.
Thank you, Kevin. Council, open it up for questions or additional discussion related to the general fund budget?
Well, I'll start with the contingency fund. Kevin and I had an opportunity to have a conversation about that this afternoon, which I found very, very helpful. Kevin, I appreciate that, taking the time to paint that picture a little bit better. And you know, that's driven in part by our current policy, that we'd be at 50% of next year's budget. You know, we need to have that reserve. I think if we're going to include that at the end of the day or when the time comes that we include that, whether it be this year or a future year, we need, I would encourage this council to create a better policy so that in, when there are times where maybe revenues are higher or expenses are lower and we see that fund balance increase, that there's actually a place where that money goes that can then decrease future year's levies, whether we transfer that to capital improvement or to parks or some other project, so it doesn't just sit there. I know, just in my short time in this council, there's been a number of conversations around, well, can we fund that from fund balance? And so my concern, and you know, I called out at our last meeting and one of the members of the public did and they referred to it as a slush fund, and I don't see that as something that the staff would do, but it would be a future council. They'll be like, yeah, we've got this extra quote-unquote money. Let's use it. And so if we're going to include this, I would like to see a policy written in such a way that there's direction given to future councils of how that fund balance is used. The other thing I'd put out there for this council's consideration is that we review our policy of 50%. There's a lot of things that we're trying to take on as a city to fund things like parks, like right staff. We took on roads last year. By withholding this 250 this year, it's a two-point difference to the levy. It takes us from mid-13s to mid-11. And we know that we can get by another year without it, just based on Kevin's projections are. And I would argue we could probably get by for two years without including it if we change our policy to some number less than 50%. I mean, what's recommended is anywhere from 35 to 50. We don't have to be at 50. So knowing or hoping that we review this policy anyway, to at least maybe give some more clarity to what it's used for, I would also just submit for consideration that we consider a lower number to push out the need for this fund for another cycle or two.
So, I appreciate the comments and I just have to say, I've been on council for eight years and not having to have a fund balance conversation has been one of the positive parts of just a benefit that we've had of being very well fiscally managed. I appreciate that having that 50% level is a strain, but I wouldn't, especially in years of growing, when we're trying to catch up on deferred maintenance, like I, I hear that pain. I just wouldn't want to be on council and having to have a different conversation should we bring that number less. And we've done, there's things I think all of us would argue that maybe haven't done what, you know, we haven't caught up, kept up on deferred maintenance and there's some things that we all wish maybe would have been done differently over the years. But having that strong fund balance and having the benefit of the rating agency's positive reflection on that, I just, I don't think I could get behind not having that number be at 50%. Especially because we know that the revenue, our, you know, our revenue timing is limited and there's times we, from an operations perspective, need to dip into that. It's, yes, it's a strain to catch up on deferred maintenance. It's a strain to do these things that we've been trying to catch up on, but I wouldn't want to be sitting in this seat, having to make a tough call because they're, they're, these are projections and we know that projections are sometimes favorable and we try to be conservative in those, but there's also times where that just isn't the case. And so that's my perspective, but I, I do also recognize it's, it's a challenge and I, you know, and if the, if the motivation is there's other things we need to catch up on, we have been doing a lot of catch-up and maybe some of those things we can wait a little bit longer and to just not have, I, I don't want us to give up that financial security for that catch-up. Just my perspective.
I just know that the people I've been talking to lately especially, that 13% is not very palatable this year. So if there's some way that we can kind of soften that a little bit, it's going to be good. And maybe there's something from 0 to 250,000 that we could figure in there to make this more, come out to the right number. I don't know, but.
So Mayor and City Council, just to remind you, so right now the levy is at about a 13.2% increase and that is citywide for all levies that the city has. If you take out 250,000, since that seems to be the number, it would reduce it to about 11 and a half percent increase for the year and how that would affect the average home value in the city of Forest Lake would decrease the taxes by about $25. So at the current levy, they would be raised by about $185. It would reduce it to about $160 for the average home in Forest Lake. So it would change it by about $25.
The contracts that we're about to negotiate too, we have what, three union contracts coming up? How do you think this could affect this budget? It's an unknown.
It's unknown. We have factors built into there, into our budget for where those are going to end up. We look, we do have settled contracts that the city has now, so everything will just be taken into consideration for budget needs. But right now, I believe we just scheduled the first one in a couple of weeks. So, we don't have what those numbers are at now or what their current proposals are.
But there is some money in this budget to accommodate at least part of it, right?
There is, there is money in this budget, correct. So again, speaking to what needs to come out of this meeting and what we're really looking forward to is that September, the next City Council meeting on September 23rd, where we need to have a resolution approved for what that preliminary levy is as that needs to be certified to county by September 30th. So again, this number can be certified at whatever dollar amount or percentage increase the City Council wants, but the council cannot go higher than that amount. They can lower it. So this, keep that in mind as you're having these conversations at this point for, for your discussions.
So a couple of thoughts. I, I appreciate Councilman Erickson's, Councilmember Erickson's thoughts on this and, and Mayor Bane's thoughts, the opposite side of that. It, the 45%, I mean, what does that number look like? Does that, if you're dropping it 5% for that, as far as the fund balance, does that, how bad of a hit does that take from some of these, our bond ratings and that? Is it substantial? Is it a little bit? I think, I think just getting the sense of the council, we need to come down from 13.2. I, I think that I personally would like to see us happen, happen to do that. How do we get there? Is it this? Is it go to staff and say, okay, it sounds like yes, that was kind of our high mark. We were comfortable with that. We'd like to see it down a little bit. Do we do that now? Do we wait until after we set that high, the levy and then try to work that back in October, November? And I'm open to thoughts on, on either way, how to do that, but I think we can agree that maybe that the 13.2 is, and we've heard it from residents, that that is a bit much at this point.
I, um, so there's a couple of, if, if the thought is that 13, you know, that we need to come down and if the 13.2 is too high, we, this year have done a substantial increase and we've attempted in multiple years to do a substantial increase to the park dedication fund. Perhaps, I, what I would be, and, and the number of what that, what that fund needs to be at is a projection to, you know, fund deferred maintenance, do catch-up on that deferred maintenance and it's, it's kind of this missing piece to the 10-year plan that we've been struggling to bake into our levy. Rather than, rather than play with a surplus number, I would frankly, I'd rather see us keep this, keep the surplus and keep that fund balance target at 50%, keep that funded and make the variable the park dedication fund. And so bring that down to a number that's palatable to council and then should we have a positive fund balance, to councilmember Erickson's point, positive fund balances could be directed to projects specific to the park dedication fund. It could be, those, those dollars could be directed. And that way you have a baseline of sure financial position and the variable is the place that where we've been struggling to make some progress anyway and have that variable be to fund the park dedication fund. I, I just, for us to take a less conservative approach, it's, it's, I feel like it's the part of our financial plan that has gone well and we've had the benefit of being able to have those dollars. And again, it's, it's a contingency fund and so that could be funded to a, a project that was specific to the park dedication fund and if the council wanted to look at upcoming projects and to dedicate a project that would be on the bubble, maybe not fully funded, to me, that's a more palatable approach and might achieve both, you know, both directions. I, I think we also need to recognize the, there's been a lot of catch-up that has happened over the last couple of years and so I appreciate we may be in a year where we need to take a pause, back off a little bit. But also, these projects keep, they stay on the list, right? And so there is, if not this year, then we come back next year and we're kind of having the same conversation. So, but I, I just, if there's a variation or a, a need to come down a bit, I would say maybe it comes out of that park dedication fund and you at least keep fund balance where it is. That would be what I would advocate.
I'm open to that. I, I think though, maybe a broader look at what, instead of just specifically picking on the park balance, fund balance across the line, there's some positions that we as a council are like really, really behind. You know, different ways to look at this, instead of just saying let's, if you were kind of back at parks.
There's, that's an option as well.
So is there direction tonight for which of those options you would like us to prepare for the September 23rd meeting? Without direction, we just keep bringing back the same stuff. So you have to tell us collectively what you'd like to see.
Council thoughts?
I, I, I think we, I'm just not speaking for myself, but it seems like the, the council would like to see it lower. And it seems like there is, I could go either way on the contingency fee. I completely understand the mayor's thoughts on this. We have worked in previous to, to my time on here, worked hard to get, to get where we're at on that and be conservative there. So I'm open to keeping that and maybe going down that path of, of maybe park or a position that we're really not, we might want to push off or I guess that, down that route.
Um, one of the, one of the things that stands out to me as I listen to Kevin's presentation and to know what has, so we are, we have a favorable variance this year in wages and salaries because of open positions. And so just given where we are with timing for positions and staffing and current open positions, I guess I would be interested in staff's perspective on is there, is there timing differences that would be expected of, for the new positions proposed? Are those expected and needed for full year? I know it's dangerous to think about a mid-year, to only fund a mid-year because we then need to commit in future years to a full salary. But from a timing perspective, are we looking at that anyway, given where we are with hiring some of our open positions? Is there anything that's obvious that comes to the table just from a timing difference that then might result in some sort of a budget impact that we should consider? I don't, that's low hanging fruit. Let's at least consider it.
My understanding is that historically the city hasn't been able to fill new positions any earlier than the start of the second quarter. Back when we were singing Kumbaya and I thought we all were on board and of this, you know, I would have come to you in, in November and asked you to, you know, be approving job descriptions and advertisements. So I would kind of leave that up to, to council discretion. If you want to continue how we've done it in the past, if we need to make sure that it gets approved at December, in December, then you're correct, Mayor, you're probably, we could probably dial some of those new positions back to not start until the second quarter of '25. But again, I, I want to say this so that everybody knows then, you're going to see a bigger increase in '25 because then you'll have them funded for that full year. So just understand that you're kicking that can down to the next year, or to '26. I forget what year we're in. In '26, we'll see a bigger increase because then even with no changes to anything, you'll be funding that position for the whole year. I, I would also, so the flip side of this is, and how you want to approach budgeting, I get that people don't like to have to see in the budget 250, $500,000 for contingency. But if you are conservative in your budgeting, then perhaps you're not going to have to see those numbers. So it's a horse apiece, right, where I'm going with this? So you could, you could dial back those positions and make it easy now. Or again, if they don't get filled until second or third quarter, or whatever it's historically been, well, gosh, now you've just helped the fund balance for the next year. And so it's really about when you want to make that decision and how you want to make that decision. So I don't think that it's a bad thing, I guess, to, for us to be, be budgeting for the full year because as we've seen through this year, this is a godsend to have this extra 400 and some thousand dollars, right? So.
And I, I mentioned the, the mid-year addition as maybe another alternative to taking a position fully off. I'm, I'm in full support of all the positions that have been presented. That's why if we're looking for reasons to decrease, I would look to something that was more of a capital project. But I wanted to throw that as an option on the table if staff or if anybody in council is considering a position that we could do a partial year fund. Again, that is committing us to that position at some point. It's just a timing difference. But as we've seen, that can provide a fair amount of budget relief if needed.
Well, I know with the fire captain position, we're still hoping to get that funded. So I mean, that's, if, if that were to come through, we would see that out of this next year's budget, next three years' budget.
No magical news on that yet?
I don't think so. Chief would be jumping out of his chair if he knew what there was.
Is that, we will know by the end of the, end of the month? Is that right? Has there been anybody in Minnesota that's heard? No? Okay. Yeah. Are there other, I mean, so we've got this question of positions. Are there other positions that folks are kind of on the fence on and would like to have some further consideration of?
I, I brought up at the first meeting, just the concern or the, of the EDA position slash whatever we're calling it now. And that, that need. So if there's some additional information on justifying that, I'm, I'm open to that. I just, it's a concern, I think.
I think more information on that one. That's probably the one that in my mind was new this year. So just more clarity of the timing on that would be helpful.
And I think you, this is at least the second year that staff has requested this position. If this position would be filled, the community development department would have accommodated for the growth since 2014 to 2025 with this one position. And so I think anything less than, than another position there is keeping them behind the eight ball, so to speak. And so at a very high level, I would advocate that you, you know, consider keeping that position in and, and all of the positions. We, we really, there was a lot more requests that came in when we started this conversation and they got slimmed down to really what we truly feel we need. I think if you were to, to say that you, you don't think you need a position, we're going to probably have to have some conversations about which programs we're not able to continue doing. You know, we, we talk about wanting to be more responsive on economic development. We know we have issues at the, the airports. Those type of things are not going to be able to get done. We're not going to be able to get caught up on if we don't get the resources to help us do that.
Yeah.
All right. I feel really strongly about the staff positions for this next year. Maybe not the training captain. We'll see what happens with the grant.
It's, I mean, the, the, I'll echo Christina's comments on the EDA position or the, kind of the planning position, but also the public safety positions are, it's, it's supplement for additional, additional staff. And, you know, this, I think we've all agreed that the C, the CSO officer is really, do we hire this CSO officer? It's a cost savings from, you know, hiring, adding headcount on the police side. It's a great pipeline to that program. And then, you know, we've talked about the need of some additional resources on the fire department and trying to maintain that pay down call model. That, to me, that, that makes these staffing positions really challenging.
So, so I guess final thought for me on this is I, I think if, if staff is disappointed in some of this concern or angst or whatever, I think especially for staff that's been here a long time, 13 or 14% last year, 13%, that, that's not what we've done in Forest Lake. And I think we are, by taking this back a little bit, we're still doing much more than previous councils have ever done and what our taxpayers are used to, right or wrong. And so I think with staff and if everyone can keep that in mind when we're, we're going through this, we're not a council sitting up here saying, nope, no increases. We don't want any other positions, whatever. We're, we're here to support. We have been, at least this last two years this council has. So I hope staff keeps that in mind when we're maybe seeming like we're negative about something or not wanting a position. I just.
Thank you for expressing that. Because I agree, that's what makes this question challenging. That's partly why I repeatedly kind of keep going back to, it's the deferred maintenance that is the, the part that we've recovered a lot on and slowing that a bit and taking a little extra time on some of those projects, maybe is the spot where we have to take a pause.
And, and I don't even know at 11%, really how much of a pause that is. Maybe it's slowing it back a little bit, but, but not taking a pause. Cause we're, if we're going to spend 500, 10% more on parks, that's not taking a pause.
So how much would you like us to take out of the park dedication fund for the September 23rd meeting? You know that 250,000 is going to get you down to 11 something percent. It's going to save the average homeowner $25. So you can kind of use that as a.
So, so part of your, second part of your presentation here, Kevin, on the, these different parks, are those hard numbers? Are those estimates or where, where are we at? Remind me, maybe that's.
Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but those are what the estimate costs are for those, for those projects.
Pretty accurate ones. I mean, feel comfortable with those numbers?
I would say they're accurate, but there's, you know, grants and stuff you can apply for that, that's unknown, you know, until we're budgeted that, that dollar amount. I'm not going to chase grants without knowing there's, there's money there to pay for it, so.
And, you know, I was a bit surprised and maybe I shouldn't have been because you made the point about you're going to do extra. But in my mind, when we were agreed to do the 100,000 for the veterans memorial, I was taking that from the 500 and not adding another 100. So maybe that's one place to, to start, to look at.
Part of that 600 isn't just to fund next year's projects, but it's beginning to fund that fund balance. So I mean, if we scale that back, we're really just saying, all right, we can still do Manor Park. We can still do Cooling Camp. But following your projects, you're going to get cycled out farther.
Correct. Or you'll have to do more bonding rather than paying cash.
In fairness and transparency, right, a couple of years ago, this number was zero. So it's, to your point, it is continuing to make some substantial progress from where it has been. It's just again, that backlog list doesn't get any shorter and so.
I think what would have helped too, you know, last year, what did we, we stuck $900,000 in the roads. Kind of nice to know exactly how we spent that money and let everybody know how that money was spent and where it went. And so it makes it a little bit more palatable that way too. So putting a lot of pressure on Ryan here, but maybe a.
He doesn't worry about where the money comes from.
Just a little short, you know, explanation at the next meeting or something would be helpful.
We could just have a figure. That would be the easiest way to have a visual.
Exactly. But if we present that to the public, then they know where the tax dollars are going.
And, and may I, maybe it's also not what you spent it on this year, but what you plan to spend it on next year too. So they understand what that tax next year is going to be for.
Exactly, yeah.
A visual for both would be good.
One thing to signal Mayor and City Council too, is to say, for example, you decide to take $100,000 out of the park improvement fund. We're certifying a total levy dol, we're certifying a total levy. It's not saying at that point you can't shift the levy dollars between funds. We just can't go over that, that specific dollar amount. So I just want you to keep that in mind, not to add another, something else to the equation here. But if you do, once you take it out, there's no getting it back. So that's where I just want to stress the importance of, of this levy that, that's going to be coming to council on the, on the 23rd.
I'm a big proponent of transparency though, and I wouldn't encourage any.
Correct.
Gameplay of moving it around from funds. I mean, that's why we're trying to spend so much time to really understand what council sees as a, as a priority. So should we be, is it 250 out of parks for the next meeting or am I hearing 100,000 out of parks?
What is, if 250 out of parks, what does that bring, what does that bring our projected levy down to?
About 11 and a half percent.
As a preliminary number, how's that sit?
It's a helpful place to start.
It is.
Okay. So we will reduce the, the park dedication, the park funds by 250,000 for the next meeting?
This is a little, a little outside the scope of this, but Councilmember Erickson mentioned an update of policy and us specifically having a policy directing how.
So we do, we do say in our policy that if it's over 50%, that it goes to a capital fund. It's, it's not as specific as which capital fund, but our policy does say that. And maybe at a discussion item, maybe it's just a review of that policy so that we're all on the same page too. But to your concern, if I'm understanding it correctly, our policy does say that it goes to a capital fund, can go to a capital fund.
Can or does?
Can, probably.
Oh, has that been done?
It has not historically been done and that's where it says reviewing that policy and making sure. I view this as part of my year end prep when we're doing the audit. Once I get the final numbers in, looking at what's our fund balance at? What percentage of that is possibly over and then coming to council with, we have, for example, 50,000 excess fund balance. Where should we, where would you like that transfer to? So as more memorializing that fund to Christina's point, that policy to Christina's point, it's in there, make it more clear, but then also make sure that it's getting done.
I, yeah, I would, I would, I just wanted to say, I would support that, right? Like us being specific that it, it does go to and make sure we're following that specific to a capital fund.
And I would, I would say you should just incorporate that into your normal budgeting process. So, you know, when, when you're doing those, when you're looking at the next year and you're projecting this year out and then get the direction from council about which of those capital funds you want it to go to.
Yeah, this fund balance won't be going away. It's going to be every year.
All right. Any other changes that you want us to make before we bring it back on the 23rd? Okay.
Thank you. Move on to our consideration of the utility funds?
Okay. So shifting gears into utility funds, I got some high level information on this on some PowerPoints here, some more detail in your packet. It's like always. So stop me as I go along here. This is more or less your first look as you, at the utility funds in, in whole. You have seen some of those capital improvement projects and capital requests come through when we've done our CIP and long-term capital planning with our new software, Planet. But this kind of brings all that in, in together and then also all the operating aspects of these funds as well. So one thing in the utility funds is, is a new position request this year is a utility superintendent. To remind council, in part of the 2024 budget, there was a position approved for a stormwater technician. Staff has reviewed really what the needs of that, those departments are as it specifically relates to utilities. And it feels like a utility superintendent position would be a better fit for the needs of the department. Also just backing up a little bit, that stormwater technician position has not been filled for 2024. So there has been no hire. So really this utility superintendent position would oversee all the aspects of the day-to-day operations as it relates to water, sewer and storm, and really taking on more of that leadership role in that department and help with some of the planning operations and public relations as it relates to water, sewer and storm water. Also included in the budget for the utility funds is 15,000, 5,000 in each of the three funds. For utility long-range financial management plan, this would be similar to what you have seen for the general fund in our tax levy, really bringing that comprehensive look as a 10-year out, brings in together the operating, the capital, debt considerations and what those utility rates need to be at, not in, only in the foreseeable future, but where they need to be at in the next five to 10 years. And also included with the information in your packet, all expenses in these funds are projected to go up 4%. So similar to last year, we started implementing, we really wanted to look at what's a target cash balance for our utility funds. So when you identify that minimum target, target cash balance, kind of like the 50% general fund balance policy is, where do we need that cash balance to be? So really what we're looking at is we want that balance to be 50% of the following year's operating expenses. This includes wages, supplies, repair, maintenance, anything to keep operating the, the day-to-day activities. It includes capital equipment items that are identified that we want to pay cash for. So all your equipment, like your trucks, trailers, things of that nature, we want to make sure that we have cash on hand to pay for some of those items. And that's where it really brings in, the 10-year plan really brings that comprehensive look, are you paying cash? Are you going to be issuing debt? You know, how does that look like? To make sure we have cash on hand for when those future capital needs comes up. We also look at the debt payments that are in the fund, in the funds and what will be projected in the funds. And we want that cash balance to be at 100% of the following years, debt payments and principal and interest included. So with that, if council recalls back in 2024, there were three years worth of utilities raised. So with that, if council recalls back in twenty twenty four, there were three years worth of utility rates approved for all three funds, the water, sewer, and stormwater fees. So there are fees approved for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, and twenty twenty six. So as currently, as approved in the fee schedule, the water rates are slated to increase six percent in twenty twenty five. Along with the surface water management fees are also slated to increase six percent. And those are slated right now to increase six percent over the next ten years. The sewer rates are currently approved to be an increase of three percent in twenty five over twenty twenty four, while my, while maintaining that three percent increase over the next ten years as well. These rates are approved. They do come to council annually in October, November of every year to be approved for them where they can be changed. But right now, staff is recommending that those funds, that those, excuse me, those rates stay at what is currently approved in in the fee schedule. So that's a high level overview of the utility funds. There's a lot more detail that was included in your packet based on each fund. Be happy to answer any questions that you have as it relates to that.
Thank you, Kevin. Kevin, what would you estimate our, just our keeping up with inflation type increase for these funds? Like, what's the outside of our control impact of wages, impact of price increases on supplies, all of that stuff? Like, what, do we have an estimate of what? And I'm just trying to there, you could, somebody could have a perspective that, gosh, six percent for the next ten years sounds like a lot. Current rate of inflation seems like actually that's, that's not a lot. So like, what is, I'm just trying to get at it. Estimate of our rate increases versus kind of our estimated cost increases for those.
So to answer your question, so right now, those expenses are projected to increase at roughly four percent. So that's wages, supplies, repair, maintenance. Dave can probably answer this a little bit better than me, but one of the big outliers, like specifically in the water fund, is water maintenance breaks. You don't know when they're going to happen, how many they're going to happen, how much repairs and maintenance you're really going to have in any given year that you're, that you're going to have to, that you're going to have to repair. So keep in mind that even though I'm seeing a four percent increase in those expenses as a six percent increase in rates, that's only in operating, if we have capital needs on top of that, as well as debt service requirements that we need to cover and make payments on as well. These funds do not have any property tax levy dollars going into them. They are strictly funded with user fees as are charged to residents that use this service. So there is a different little bit correlation there. So that's where we look at, what do those rates need to be at to hit that target cash balance? They're reviewed annually to see where they're at. Will they be adjusted in the future? Yes, because as we said before, we look at our long term plans, you look at all this annually to make sure they're where they're at. So based on what we're doing right now, those are the, those increases seem reasonable to where they need to be. With that fifteen thousand currently in the budget for that long term financial management plan, that'll hopefully bring everything into a much clearer picture where we have a lot better understanding, is this really where where these rates need to be now and in, now and going in the future. One of the other rates that Councilmember, I didn't met council rate in the sewer fund, that is a huge expense in in the sewer fund that fluctuates year to year. The percentages is based on flows of the whole system and what the flows are specifically to Forest Lake. So the good thing is we get that number very early in the budgeting process. So I think we usually get that in May of every year. And in my experience, that number doesn't change. So then that's the number, and then we pay that monthly to Matt Council. So there's no unexpected surprises in that going into twenty twenty five.
Any other questions for Kevin or comments?
Yeah, I remember I was having a conversation last budget cycle about that stormwater tech. Was that funded from the utility funds, or was that part of the general levy?
So that ended up getting moved to being funded from the sewer fund and the general fund.
So where's this new superintendent going to be funded from?
This is getting split right now as budgeted, basically a third, a third, a third in each of the utility funds. There's no general fund dollars funding this position.
Are we still hiring the tech?
No. We have not hired the tech. We're not, and it's not proposed that we are hiring the tech.
So where are those budgeted dollars? Those dollars are budgeted for that.
So those dollars are budgeted currently in the general fund and sewer fund. They're in the budget, and they're not currently projected to be spent in twenty twenty four.
Are they part of the twenty four surplus?
In the general fund, yes.
And they're not in the twenty five budget?
No.
How many of the positions that we budgeted for last year do we actually hire? It wasn't the H R person, it wasn't the storm tech. I think there was a third one we approved.
There, so back in the twenty twenty four budget, we had Dan Ondos' old position, the Assistant City Administrator, was in the twenty twenty four budget and not filled. We had an H R manager supervisor, whatever the title was, in twenty twenty four. We had the stormwater technician that was in the budget and has not been hired.
But the only one of those that we intend not to do is the stormwater tech, and then we realigned the assistant and the H R position number. And we're, you know, we want to make sure we have a good strong H R person in that position.
Yeah, and just, you know, for the public, part with the change of administrator and where we're at, that's part of the reason, big reason why we haven't hired those positions, so that.
Other questions or comments on the utility rate or utility budget?
So again, here, we're looking for any direction that you have that's a little bit different than what we just went over at the tax levy. But pretty soon, once we get, starting pretty soon here, we'll start be looking at our annual fees and starting that process. So unless we hear otherwise, we will keep those twenty twenty five rates at what they were approved at in twenty twenty four and what you will see when we get to that point.
I think those rates have been pretty consistent over the last few years. So at least we can start there.
I I would, you know, if we can review that, it is because it's six percent one year, the next thing, three years, there's your eighteen percent increase. And so that starts, those numbers start to add up. So we can visit that. I mean, if that's where it needs to be, that where it has to be. But we should be reviewing this, which we are, and change it accordingly if need be.
Are you saying you're good with twenty, what's proposed for twenty twenty five and and review again next year?
And and Kevin touched on that long range financial management plan, too, that will give you more of those details going out for the next ten years. And whether or not it should be the same or or be adjusted.
Sounds, seems like we have, see some heads nodding. All right. Any other information that we need staff to prepare for this? I think we're okay. All right. Thank you, Kevin. Council, before we move off of this topic on budget overall, any other comments or thoughts? We haven't maybe already talked about it? Christina, Kevin, anything else you need from us? All right. We'll bring our discussion item to a close, and we'll move on to staff updates. And we'll start with, let's just start with Jolene and go around.
No updates this evening.
Abby.
The only update I have is that we did have a good arts in the park season. We did send out to all of our vendors a survey this year. That's kind of new, just to see how we did, how the events are going, the musical acts themselves, if our vendors have any input on those. I also want to thank Don Boogie in our office, Jordan Lehman, our intern this year. I think Kevin Warner in Parks as well as Dave, that definitely, that definitely stepped up this year. The event really could not have happened without the team effort that it took to kind of put it together after Jamie departed, so.
Dave.
I just want to update. The preconstruction meeting for Belts Park is tomorrow, and they plan on starting to do removals by the end of this week. They were pushed back so far. I don't think the surfacing will go on this year. It'll probably be a spring thing. I think you remember me talking about it. We needed to get it lined up for that to happen, but the rain has pushed him back so far that he finally got to this project. So it'll, it sounds like it'll all get completed except for the surfacing that'll happen in the spring.
Chief Peterson.
Yeah, Mayor and City Council members, I want to publicly thank Officer Megan Olstad for seventeen years of service with the Forest Lake Police Department. Her last day is going to be this Friday. And then this Thursday and Friday is the memorial service and funeral service for former police officer David Paznick and former police chief Dave Schwartz, and just thinking of them and their families this week.
Thank you for that, Chief. Chief Newman.
Mayor and Council, I have two updates. The first update is on the SAFER grant. In Minnesota, historically, it's mid September. For whatever reason, they wait till the middle of September to ward for Minnesota Fire Department. So fingers are still crossed with that. This last week, we went through our I S L rating, or that had begun. And so every five years, I S L comes into your city and they rate your department's ability to respond to structure fires. That process looks at equipment, staffing, training. They look at things like checking hydrants, water flow, which we did with Public Works this year. Currently, the city has a rating of a four. The the lower the rating, the better. And hopefully, we're going to be able to get that down to a three, but you really never know until that rating's completed. Usually takes about three or four months after they come in and do all the testing before you actually get your rating. So sometime Novemberish, Decemberish, we should know. That's all I have for updates, unless you have questions for me.
Thank you, Chief. That rating is an impact on insurance rates. That is one of the underwriting criteria that insurance companies look at. So there is, us having that lower rating certainly has that potential for positive impact, which probably means a less of a price increase if you've been following insurance rates lately, but it is a positive impact for everybody in the community. So job well done. Thank you.
Thanks.
And that's, but not yet final, correct?
That's not fi- final yet. Not till November, December, we'll know.
Thank you. Amanda.
Yeah, just a reminder that on Wednesday, there is a special meeting for the council to select the finalist for the city administrator position. That will be at seven P M. in the Forest Lake room across the hall. And please let me know if you didn't get all of your information, but that should have come over via email from Carl last Friday.
Thank you. And Christina.
Mayor and Council, last week, Mandat sent us the E A W for Highway ninety seven. So if anyone is interested in looking at that, there's a big thick book outside the front windows there. They do have an online link as well, and they are accepting comments on that project, the E A W part of that project until October eleventh.
Very good. Thank you. Ryan.
Mayor, City Council, just a couple of things. Highway eight project that's coming down the pipeline. We plan on doing a short presentation and get you guys kind of up to speed on that project, that next city council meeting on September twenty third. And in regards to the public projects, a lot of that stuff's pretty much wrapped up or very close to being wrapped up. Some of the residential subdivision stuff, there are really not much to report. We haven't been able to finish the grading or start grading on those projects. So even by the September twenty third meeting, there'll be more probably development work to be able to report back.
Kevin, anything for council?
No further updates.
All right, let's start with council updates, and we'll just go right down the line here. Councilmember Erickson?
No updates tonight.
Councilmember Husner.
When David brought up Belts Park, I was reminded, excuse me, I attended a funeral at the Catholic Church last week, and Father Bodine, he'd sure like to have somebody to come and talk to him about negotiating for the parking area there. So I don't know where that's at, or if somebody's been talking to him or whatever.
Yeah, we were working through agreement. They, their legal looked at it and has sent a proposed agreement back to us for review.
Okay, so it is, it's in the works, then?
Yeah, Mayor's been quite busy lately, so it's one of those things that we're kind of still, still looking through and looking at options as well.
Otherwise, no other updates.
So I just want to follow up on that. I think it's going to be on hold because my understanding is that parking lot agreement is not necessary unless you were to do some expansions at Belts Park, is what I've told the history of that is. And so at your last meeting, I think you approved an extension for that D N R grant for Belts Park with the idea that hopefully, right away in January, the new Parks Commission can start tackling that issue. So I, staff's understanding is that there will not be a need for a parking lot agreement unless there is a project there. If that's incorrect, please let us know. But that's kind of how it's been explained to me by a couple of people of how that came about.
That sounds different than any conversations I've had with with Father Bodine.
Well, I, I mean, from the city's position. So when we talked about, like, doing the courts earlier this year, as long as we were replacing in kind, there wasn't a need to do the parking lot agreement, is my understanding. It was with the expansion. That was the the discussion that we'd had before.
Well, it's just that the conversation needs to take, take place.
And part of that, Mayor and Council, is once you get to the design of Belts Park, you may find that it's more financially prudent to build a parking lot than to enter into an agreement with the church.
So is the
So it's on hold, was my understanding. I don't, Dave does have a lot of things on his plate, but I, we were, I was not expecting that we were bringing that forward anytime soon. Until the design of the park had been decided by the council.
So are you, are you looking for feedback from us on if that, are we okay with that, or?
Yeah, because I did, I just, I had to interrupt because I didn't want you to expect something was coming when it's not. But if we had, if I had the wrong understanding, then please correct us, and we'll get back to it.
I mean, the public's been using their parking lot for years in, without any sort of an agreement. And I think, I feel like where we left it was we want to have a park there. We're going to make improvements there, which is going to attract even more people than what we currently have. And it was my understanding that we were pursuing an agreement with the church.
I think that's the understanding, I think that's his understanding also. I just brought it up because I wanted the conversation to take place. It was a casual conversation. I'll, I'll get somebody over there to talk to you. Simple as that. So.
You know, if
I feel like I just heard you say, though, we were going to do improvements to bring more people there, and that was the parking, that's why you needed the parking lot agreement. So again, if you want to do improvements there, would you still need a parking lot agreement?
I think so.
Okay.
We're, we are improving. I mean, we may not be expanding the footprint of a tennis court, but we are making improvements there. I mean, those courts have been unplayable, largely speaking, for years. So if we have new courts and a basketball court, that it's going to bring more people, and they're going to park at the church. And they're leaving the trash behind, they're going into the church to use their bathroom. I mean, those are things that are existing that have been a part of the ongoing conversation.
So it sounds like we might be at a spot where we need to monetize the want and the need, and so maybe seeing what that
We should have taken that two fifty out of the park.
See, you remember this now. Remember this when you
Well, I, I do think that seeing what that agreement might look like, I think, might help to council to understand what is the nature of, like, what is that going to cost, and is that, are we at a spot where that's what we want to do?
Because even in the wintertime, that whole side is lined up with cars because the kids slide down that hill there. I've seen that many times. They go over the snowbank there and slide down that hill. And, you know, it's just, I didn't mean it to be an agenda item. I just wanted somebody to pick up the conversation.
I think it brought up, though, that we're not on the same page. So let's get on the same page and and if there is an agreement that's in draft, maybe council needs to see that to again, kind of monetize what that want and need is.
Otherwise, no other updates.
Councilmember Roberts.
Just one update and just a question, a follow up, a conversation earlier or open forum, a topic. I helped serve corn, and so I appreciate Dave and Kevin and everyone's help there, especially all the volunteers. It was a great night. The public really appreciates that, and so thank you to everyone that helped out with that. The question is to the pickleball gentleman in the, in the condition of the courts. I was out there today. I would have to say, I've not been to many pickleball courts, but since the money we spent, it is a little disappointing with the condition that it's in. And so I don't know if, if where we're at with the contract, or is that fully paid out? Are we happy with that? Is staff happy with the condition of those courts and their, and their job?
I left for vacation right as they were doing the repairs, so I haven't had a chance to even look at anything yet. So typically Eugene emails me and tells me they did a horrible job, and I didn't hear that, so I was thinking that they did a good job. So I was surprised when Eugene came here tonight and said they did a bad job. So I can take a look at it and give you guys an update.
Yeah, and I guess I would, you know, Yeah, and I guess I would, you know, concerned citizens coming in, they're not here, they don't want to complain about stuff. They want, they were grateful for this project, and so I just think that if this, we spent the money, let's make sure and hold that. If there is an issue on the contractors, let's try to hold them accountable and get it, get it taken care of at all possible.
Okay. I just, no updates for me, just wanted to echo Chief Peterson's appreciation to Officer Megan Olstad. We wish her well in her future endeavors, and what a blessing she has been to this community. And the kids at the high school in particular are really going to miss her. She leaves some big shoes to fill, big boots to fill, so we appreciate it, Officer Olstad. That is the end of our planned agenda, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.